Welcome, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order. Haley, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Backus?
Here.
Councilmember Bane?
Here.
Councilmember Husnick?
Here.
Councilmember Egner?
Here.
And Mayor Winnick?
Here.
I ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty as its throne.
Hey, Donovan. Please grab the open forum sheet. I'll look for approval of the agenda.
Some of them.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brings us to the open forum.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Tolsmann and I live at 756 North Shore Drive in Forest Lake. I am here tonight to share my profound disappointment over the decision to not allow the zoning change that would facilitate the creation of the Cambria Hills Youth Mental Health Program Facility here in Forest Lake. I want to be angry, I want to say shame on you, but that won't help move things forward. Rather, I will ask respectfully and passionately that one of you who voted no find it in your heart to request a special meeting to reconsider that decision. As a retired educator with a forty-year career, I have watched the research and discussion around mental health programs for youth grow and support this type of facility, treatment that is effective and meaningful for youth and families. The support of the administration of Forest Lake Area Schools and Intermediate District 916 verifies this potential. As a thirty-five-year citizen of Forest Lake, I want to be proud of the work our community will do in being welcoming, inclusive, and supportive to all families, individuals, youth, and seniors, no matter the challenges they face. Community is built by being in community with each other. The actions of a few have prohibited this from happening. Perhaps most discouraging is the blatant disregard for the work and opinion of the Planning Commission that was shown by those of you who voted no. A dedicated group of volunteers was made to feel their work was unimportant and not valid. This is a travesty and disrespectful of the work they take so seriously. At this point, I'm asking that those of you who voted no do some soul-searching and think seriously about reopening the discussion. It just takes one of you who voted no to reflect and have the courage to rethink your decision. The landowners ready to sell, the neighbors most closely affected by the building of the facility, the Planning Commission who found favor in the request for rezoning, the school districts involved, the families of students who would benefit from this type of facility, and a multitude of community members are looking to you for democratic leadership to move ahead and reconsider your previous decision. I want to believe that within your hearts there's room to admit a closer look is warranted. I want to believe that the respect you have for the citizens of this community will lead you to a thoughtful and respectful conclusion about the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lynn Dufresne. I live at 18401 Elmcrest Avenue Court North in Forest Lake. First, let me say that as much as Mayor Winnick and Councilman Egner don't want me to be here or to listen to what I have to say, if I could address you privately, I would. But neither of you respond to email, and truthfully, I don't know if you read my emails.
I do respond to emails. I did not see one from you, so I'll have to...
Last year, you told me, Mayor, that you only respond to emails if you can answer a question. If you can't answer the question, you don't respond.
No.
So I took you at your word. I took you at your word. The city website says, "Email your city council." There is even a link that lets me email all of you at once. You need to change that information. Recently, Councilman Egner told someone that he doesn't look at those emails. It's misleading to residents. It feels like taxation without representation.
That is blatant not true. I do read them. I'm not saying I respond to them, but I do read them.
Well, that's good to know. Several people recently have commented on that to me.
They're wrong.
Mayor Winnick expressed a concern recently about residents of the facility. They will be children between the ages of seven and seventeen who have mental health needs. They will not be violent or have tendencies towards violence. They will not be sexual predators. Your refusal to accept that information is concerning. As mayor, you owe residents the truth. It will bring good-paying jobs to our city. It will directly help students and families in Forest Lake. People working and visiting patients will spend their money here. Let me share my personal experience. Five years ago, I was receiving radiation therapy at Fairview Hospital in Wyoming. Five days a week, for six weeks, I went there every day after work. During that time, I shopped at the local grocery and drugstores, bought gas, and ate at restaurants. Cambria Hills staff and visitors will do the same here in Forest Lake. Councilman Backus, I appeal to you personally to rethink your vote. If you voted based on information that Mayor Winnick shared with you, please think about the fact that the Planning Commission members recommended this zoning change twice. Look at the documentation city employees shared. Talk to State Representative Detmer, someone from Cambria Hills, or Jennifer Curtis, a mother who knows from personal experience how important this treatment center is. I ask you to look back at the public statements that you all made when you voted no and see if you honestly still believe those statements. Thank you.
That's a great session, open forum. You'll be criticizing the guys up there.
Uh-uh. I shouldn't.
She's not...
Don't tie up all of us to listen to that stuff.
Can you sign off to speak?
I'm going to the end.
Jennifer Curtis.
Get it over with.
We'll go at order.
Don't wear my curtain.
Yep.
Because this is a big waste of our time. They want that property, that's all they want. They can build that damn place anywhere in Forest Lake they want.
Excuse me enough.
Yeah. You get out. You get out when you get out there. See if you can tell me.
Go ahead.
Just to let you know, I'm setting a timer, so it'll beep when my time is up. That way, you guys don't have to keep an eye and can pay attention. So, good evening. My name is Jennifer Curtis. My address is 16839 Basser Street. Yes, I live in Columbus. However, my kids go to Forest Lake. I shop in Forest Lake. All of our business is in Forest Lake, therefore, I am a Forest Lake resident. I am requesting that the council reconsider the vote for the zoning text amendment. I do, however, would like to talk about transparency. I went back home and watched council meetings, full, front to back, and I noticed a few things that I want to bring up that I am deeply disturbed by. On the last meeting, April ninth, before the meeting started, Ed, you were approached by a gentleman by the name of Dave Wagar. As soon as he approached, it became very clear that you guys have known each other. You introduced him to Ben as to somebody who wanted to speak out against the zoning text amendment, and Ben, you gave your appreciation. After that moment, the both of you started giving him pointers on how to address the council to support opposition. It's on video.
It is on video, but there's no pointers on video. What I said was, he was questioning how to address the council. I said, "You're free to speak however you want. You cannot swear, or you cannot demean other people." That's all I said.
I think that it can be looked at both ways. I think that there's a lot of people who feel that it was a conflict of interest for you to speak to him about that. And then we started talking about stacking the deck. Ben had mentioned that there was somebody else, and you guys started talking about stacking the deck. Ed, you made a comment, "Well, yeah, we've got a long way to go to stack the deck." And then it became clear...
Actually, I said, "It looks like they're trying to stack the deck."
No.
And that was with the people out there.
No.
Don't put words in my mouth, because I know what I said.
Ed said, "We've got a long way to go before we stack the deck." And then it became clear to me that when we talked about this, I said, "You weren't willing to have a town hall meeting. You didn't decide, you were concerned about what the Forest Lake residents had to say. However, there was no moving forward with any sort of community meeting to find out from them directly." And then it became clear that maybe you knew that the majority of the community favored the zoning text amendment. Last thing, I have emailed both Blaine and Ed with no response from either of you. So I am here today, and I would like a commitment. Will you be willing to meet with us, all three of you actually, Ed, Ben, and Blaine?
Decisions have already been made.
So you're not willing to meet with us as a community?
I've heard from everybody in the community. You guys have been heard.
I don't think that we fully understand, though, the reason for the opposition.
I've offered my reasons, both openly and in email.
So is there a particular reason why you're not... Because I checked at our meeting on Sunday, neither one of you responded to any emails.
We do have full schedules. I have prioritized my emails. A lot of them are people who just want to vent or express other ideas. Some people left room for engagement, and I did continue with that.
I looked for engagement, I got no response. From both of you, actually.
I think your time is getting close.
Thank you.
Neil Will?
Neil Will, 20560 Georgia Avenue. My property backs up against the property in question. In March, the Cambria Hills had contacted the neighbors and brought us all together to show us and talk to us about the facility, let us know what it's all about. So we had all the information and really laid it out beautifully, told us what it was all about, really made us feel good about what was going to happen and what they wanted to do. And we also met with the CFO up in Duluth and talked to him, and was very impressed with what he had to say and what this facility was going to do and bring to our community. We also had the great honor of meeting Mr. Moore, a pillar of the community for forty-plus years, dedicated his life to mentoring children, giving back to the community. Moore is clearly not driven by money, turning down offers, wanting this land to continue the legacy of helping people, teaching, healing individuals, as well as families' lives. That is something that is amazing and humbling. The city staff has laid out a financial impact that is favorable to high-paying jobs, bring traffic into our city, using goods and services. When you have people like this coming, the opportunity of someone saying, "This community has a lot to offer," a place to move and start a business, you never know what opportunities could come of this. A question that I would have is, what plot arrangement was discussed with the developer? Since the loss of property tax revenue was named as a reason for denial, is a good opportunity that, a means of disposal for them to provide loss of revenue for this property. Approving the tax amendment, in my opinion, is fulfilling your responsibility as a council member. One, taking care of the community, taking care of our children, the human side, the side that makes us feel good. Number two, bringing in high-paying jobs, flowing money into the city, a fiscal responsible side. Councilman Backus, I know at your first meeting, I was here, that we were sworn in, you said that you are young, you've got a lot to learn. Well, I encourage you, you have a few members on your staff that I would reach out to. One that is a very successful businessman in Forest Lake, and another who's very successful in the corporate world, tackling complex issues, needing to find common ground, closing deals to complete projects. I encourage you to reach out to them. I also want you to picture this. You're driving into Forest Lake on 61, and before you turn right onto 202, in your mind, imagine this: Do you want to look to the east and see this beautiful facility, taking care of children, high-paying jobs, providing revenue to the city, something that you could really be proud of?
I can get you to finish up soon.
Yeah. Keeping Mr. Moore's legacy alive, or do you want to look to the west and see semi-trucks hauling scraps, cars, seal-polling high, rusting away, a plot of land with cold steel buildings sheds, offering very few jobs, low paying? How do you want your legacy to be seen on the city council?
Michelle Johnson, 20555 Georgia Avenue North. My property is also visible from the current Shadow Creek property, and everyone has already said everything that I'd like to say to you. I just ask that you please reconsider the zoning text amendment that was voted down by three of you on the April ninth meeting. It's important to the mental health of our community and of our state. By voting this down, you're passing up a huge opportunity, not only to help all these kids that need the help, but to provide our area with high-paying jobs, to honor the wishes of the current property owners, and to bring business to our area by way of a hundred and fifty-plus employees and hundreds of visiting family members that will shop and eat and spend their money here in our community.
Kathy Gary, 980 13th Avenue, southeast Forest Lake. Mayor, members of the council. I still have questions. That's why I wrote that on the comment area for, "What am I speaking to?" I've heard that too often, and my main question is, when are you going to start acknowledging the efforts and the research of the people that you have asked to do the research and efforts in order to advance the desires of the citizens of Forest Lake? We could not move forward with a grant to get some funding for some needed maintenance or new equipment in our parks because you had questions, and I felt it really diminished the efforts of an employee of our city that was doing her very best to be economical and had done the research to know what kind of equipment was needed in that area and not remake it into something that was going to be used by a different age group. There were other parks in our community that would fill the need for those older children, young adults, and wouldn't have to increase a footprint. I've heard the consulting firm, or whatever it was, that came and did the research that was asked about our city safety groups, the police officers, the police department, and recommendations came forward from that, and it was felt that nothing, you couldn't act on any of those recommendations. This zoning text amendment issue had been sent or came from the commission that was built by your assignments, people that you put into those places, and they volunteer their time and did the research, and you put it back on their shoulders with some questions that you had. They took another look at it, they listened to the people that have come and made their comments, and still their recommendations were ignored. I just... I feel like it makes our city very foolish when the people that... The people that have been asked to find answers to the questions that you have aren't listened to. They're not heard. And I would hope that, moving forward, you can open your minds to the answers that they're giving you for the questions that you've had.
I can get you to finish up.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff members, and others. I am Jim Redfield, and I live in Bridle Pass Village. By the way, there is a home for sale in our association, and I believe that there will be another one coming up soon, later this spring. Now, why did I mention this? I will tell you. A few years ago, my wife, Mary, and I were looking to downsize and to move to a new community. We were very impressed with the people in our association, that were very inviting and very outgoing. We're very impressed with the people in the Forest Lake community, the friendliness. Forest Lake has a lot of things going for it. We have great schools. People are willing to volunteer, and their time and money in service to others. We have a growing business community, great churches, and a number of other great qualities. We moved to Forest Lake during interesting times. Forest Lake community was struggling with issues of growth and change, and these struggles are continuing today, and decisions have to be made. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I appreciate how difficult these decisions you have to make can be. Having served on various boards, councils, and organizations, I have had to make some decisions that did not make all the people happy. There are other times, though, when we had to rethink a decision we made. With new information, more input from the people being served, and some time to rethink a decision, sometimes decisions can be changed. Mr. Mayor, city council, I believe you are faced with an opportunity to rethink one of your decisions. I'm referring to your decision at April ninth meeting, the zoning text amendment for Cambria Hills Project. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, changing your mind when presenting with new information, presented with ideas and support from your citizens, is okay. It is okay to change your mind and to change a decision made. Please reconsider your decision from April ninth. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Chris Martin, 991 13th Avenue, southeast Forest Lake, Minnesota. Sitting in the back row, Ben, watching you, and about every twenty, fifteen to twenty seconds, you look up at the clock like you are not paying any attention to any of these people that took the time to come this evening and speak.
I can do more than one thing at a time.
Glad you're good at multitasking. City of Forest Lake, as good as it sounds, as far as I'm concerned right now, walking around my community, it can't get any worse. You know, you've got the governor making comments about our facility and houses, this is a perfect place for it. I really think it's time that we rethink this, maybe go back and look at it, and maybe three people on the board should not be micromanaging the Planning Commission, especially because they were appointed individuals. Put the time into this, brought it to you, and you vote it down. What is wrong? I just... It's sad. Let's clean up our city, and let's make it good as it sounds.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Roberts, and I'm here to ask you to reconsider the zoning text amendment. I work for Northeast Metro 916, and I work with the kids who would benefit from this facility every single day. Can you please stop interrupting me?
Wants to tell where you live.
Okay, but you're being rude. On a weekly basis, I watch students from our school be transported to hospitals, only to be sent home because they're not sick enough. Some of these students are your Forest Lake kids. The facility is what our state needs, is what these kids need. These kids are our future. One of the things that was brought up at the last meeting was, "Why this parcel? It could be anywhere else." One of you even mentioned places like Prairie Care being amongst grocery stores and industrial parks. Prairie Care is very different from this facility. It would offer very different things. This parcel of land offers a unique therapeutic element unlike any other. A residential treatment facility does not belong in industrial parks. I do not expect you to know what these kids need. You don't work with them every day, but I do. And as I mentioned before, I work with them. They're Forest Lake kids, and they deserve this facility, so please reconsider.
That ends the open forum.
I know, but one minute. I know, it's okay.
Yeah, you can. You people in here are in here for one... Hey. Yeah. My name is Elvin Norby. I live at 10255 217th Street North. I live among taxpayers in the city of Forest Lake. I pay taxes on this building, and I don't know why, or what, I don't know. Okay, you people in this... People in the community are only to criticize you guys. None of these people show up at any time of what's going on. Okay, I spoke to the gal that's in charge of this health thing today, this Sue somebody. We talked for about a half an hour. As far as she's concerned, there's no concessions. They want that forty acres, and they want it for who knows what. Fairview Hospital is up here in Wyoming, okay? That's out in the middle of nowhere. That isn't, you know, that isn't, you know... There's no reason, there's no concessions. These people, I agree with, mental health's a problem. There's thirty-two square miles of township, old township, okay? We've been suckered in by this city for the last, since 2001, for nothing. Our taxes are all going to the old, old city. There's no hospital anymore, the grocery stores downtown are gone, Lake and Broadway is dead, all it's there is a beer joint. In fact, you pull Vanelle's license for liquor, and he'll fold up. So what I'm saying is, hey, you guys made a decision, okay? Let's go ahead and honor that. In fact, I talked ahead of the Times today, and I said, "There's two things." The New York Times has got a paper, okay, called The Times. It's anti-Trump, okay? Forest Lake has got a paper now, called The Times. It's anti-Winnick. You guys get off of these guys' backs, and as far as I'm concerned, we got Nancy up there, and we got Chuck, so we got balanced thing. So I'm ashamed of the people in Forest Lake. I've been here twenty-eight, nine years almost, and I can't believe they talk about their attitudes. All they're pushing is their own agendas. They don't care about the rest of the people in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That closes open forum. Look for approval on the consent... Did he want to speak? Do so.
I would love to.
Sorry, I didn't sign up earlier. My name is Patrick Kelly. I live at 21059 Fondent Avenue North on the east shore of Clear Lake. Been here in town since 1978, served on the Planning Commission for twenty-nine years, ended up quitting the planning mission, leaving in a huff, because I couldn't understand how the city council at that time had voted against a variance request that I made that was given out routinely, and for some reason, the way it was presented, they voted against it. I was... I got some good advice, and they said, "Go back and see if you can talk to one of the three people that voted against your motion, and see if you can get them to change their mind," and they'd have to bring it back up for reconsideration. I did that. Mayor Stegner came out to my property, experienced what I was explaining was a problem, and he acknowledged that... a, a problem, and he acknowledged that it's a problem, and he made a motion, I believe he made the motion. Anyway, I went back, he brought it up, and, uh, it got fixed. There was nothing embarrassing about changing your mind. Uh, I, I have a hard time... Excuse me. I have a hard time with people who, if, if the only thing they're concerned about is themselves, their property taxes, or what they see outside their window, without considering the whole, um... Obviously, I wasn't prepared for this. Anyway, I would ask you if you, one of you, three, if you would bring it up for reconsideration. If it fails again, I guess that's it. But if you would be gentlemanly enough to reconsider it, I would certainly appreciate it. Sorry for my emotions.
Brings us to the consent agenda. Look for a motion or changes there, too?
I'll make a motion that we, um, approve items B through E. I'd like to talk about a couple of the, uh, make us, have a question or a statement about, um, consent agenda, item eight, six A.
Okay.
Motion through B through E.
Do you have a second on that?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstained. All right, that brings us to item six A.
So, um, I, I don't have an, I, an issue with an individual item. Um, it's more of information and timeliness of our packet. Um, I'm concerned there's, we've now had multiple council packets go out where, on Friday, the city bills aren't included. I appreciate staff is incredibly under-resourced, um, but I, this is an area where if I start to get concerned, um, we need to have enough resources that we can get that information out. The council review of those items is an important element of our internal control structure, and when we're not able to timely do it, I just, I'm concerned that we have staff that are overburdened. Um, I appreciate staffs doing everything they can, um, and so I guess I would ask, um, interim administrator Undom of, um, what, what do we, what do you need from us to make it so we have the, those timely and we have staff, um, enough resources for staff?
I think at this point, uh, to your point, I will reprioritize the workload to make sure these get out on Friday. Um, we have had, uh, Nate return back into the office, which has helped the, the permit issuance, but there's been some other backlog of work that's, should be starting to kind of get through the system, so I can, I'll work with staff to make sure that we get these out in advance of the deadline, so, um, hopefully we won't have any more delays on the city bills moving forward.
And I would throw out there, we've talked about contract assignments, and if we need to expand use of contracts or use of some interim assistance, um, I for one would support that, so... And with that, I'll make a motion that we approve the city bills.
All right. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstained. Motion carries. Uh, that brings us to the regular agenda. Item seven A, approve the City Council workshop minutes. Okay. Anyway, that's on there, so we're looking for, uh, approval of the City Council workshop minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the workshop that occurred on March nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstained.
I abstain.
Abstain.
Okay, so, three A's and two abstains?
Wait.
Who's it?
My...
I abstain because I wasn't present, so...
I abstain for the same reason.
All right, so motion carries.
Your Honor, just a point of clarification, just to confirm that that is the minutes from the March nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen council meeting?
Right. Yeah.
And I said it wrong, sorry.
No problem.
I did.
Why was that in the regular agenda and not in the consent agenda?
Due to the fact that the two not being there, they had to abstain.
Oh, okay.
Instead of pulling it off, we just put it on there as a way to do that without having to basically pull out the consent agenda.
All right. Dan, do you want to take us into the, uh, School Resource Officer Agreement?
Yep. Uh, may members of the council, uh, before you is the updated and, uh, is the twenty eighteen through twenty twenty, um, SRO agreement with the Forest Lake Schools, uh, between the Police Department, City of Forest Lake Police Department and the Forest Lake School District. Um, this agreement is a mirror image of the existing agreement that we currently have with the Forest Lake School District. The only changes to it are just the amounts are updated based on current labor contracts that we have with the officer units, um, but there is no substantial changes to staffing levels at either school. The, the, um, amount that the city pays and the amounts of, that the school pays are the same that were done in the current contract that we currently have with the Forest Lake School District. Um, the city attorney has reviewed it, and, uh, the city finance director from AEM has also reviewed the numbers to make sure that they're accurate, and both have given their stamp of approval on this agreement from an accuracy standpoint. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions that you have on the twenty eighteen, the twenty twenty, um, SRO agreement.
All right, thank you, Dan. Open it up to the council for any discussion?
Yeah, the only point I wanted to make, I, in reading through the duties of the officers, and it was duties required by the school, I was kind of disappointed that they weren't getting involved in safe crossing in the morning of having officers there. But then I talked to Captain Weiss tonight, and he reassured me that they have a plan that is far better than what I was thinking about, so I guess my, my worries are put to bed.
All right. Any other questions, discussions?
I don't have any, not many questions. I've heard positive feedback from both, um, city staff as well as school administration staff, so, um, from my perspective, it seems like this is a well-thought-out plan. No questions.
Well, and I had, uh, talked to the chief last week, too, if, you know, there was additional equipment or anything needed. He indicated that there wasn't, so, um, basically, we're just, uh, continuing the contract we have.
If I can say one point of clarity to it, the school district has already met and approved their side of this, so they are agreeable to the terms laid out in this contract.
Yeah, that's, that was part of their...
I'll make a motion that we approve the twenty eighteen to twenty twenty SRO agreement.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. Look for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstained. Motion carries. So, uh, item seven C, authorized police recruitment?
Yeah, may members of the council, uh, during the February twenty-sixth City Council meeting, uh, the, uh, recruit, the ask for the recruitment for a police officer was tabled, pending the results of, uh, the CPSM study and a conversation with the school regarding the SRO contract. Um, since both of those two items have been completed by staff, procedurally, the item now needs to be taken out the table and returned for consideration. Um, however, there has been a slight change just in terms of the police staffing numbers since this original ask was made. Um, it was announced that Officer Pat Ferguson is announcing his retirement effective the end of May. So at this point, the ask is being, you know, is, would be considered to be changed to allow for the authorization for two recruitments at this point, just so we could run both recruitments at the same time, so we're not having to stagger them, and that way we can just ba... Basically better allocate our resources as we go through the recruitment process. Um, I also went through and updated the, um, original memo just with the new timeline, so if the recruitment is approved tonight, um, we do have an updated timeline there. But again, the same four months, uh, that was described in February is still, is still what is being proposed here, it's just that we have updated dates for consideration as well. Um, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding the process or, um, recruitment at this time.
Um, question for Captain Weiss maybe more is, I thought we were looking at, uh, the ability to, um, speed up that recruitment process.
Yeah, even that, that timeline is actually sped up, the four months. If you look at what needs to be done, the, the biggest portion of it is, is the testing upfront, the posting of that timeframe, and then to complete a thorough background. Those are two areas that we, we're not gonna, we, there's nothing we can do there. We have to post for a long enough time, we have to give the background. Where we did speed it up and has sped it up for this process as well is in the interim with some pre-planned interview dates. So applicant applies, they get moved forward, they know which dates things are gonna fall on.
Okay.
Before the date actually arrives, where in the past, it's, okay, we're gonna get the test together, then we're gonna send out a letter to them, letting them know when they're coming in. No. Now they know the next step before that step even occurs, if that makes sense, Mayor.
It does, yep. Yep, it just, it still seems like, uh, a fairly long... It is. Timeline. I, I understand the legal parameters and things that do that, I just, uh, it seems like, um, you know, with the technology and with the level of communications that, um, you know, that could be cut down even more, but unfortunately, I understand.
Yeah, we still, our backgrounder still goes to the neighborhoods wherever they've lived and knocks on doors of former neighbors, and we just, we just want to make sure we cross our Ts and dot the Is.
Sounds good.
I had a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
Um, with the release of, uh, the study that was done regarding the police department, uh, the idea of having community service offers, officers was entertained. Um, just kind of curious if filling, you know, pursuing the program of hiring community service officers would overlap with the employees that you have, full-time officers? Maybe, uh, if you're looking at hiring them, would it be two to one? Maybe, um, hire two community service officers and something of the nature instead of another full-time officer? Um, there's a lot of information to digest and a lot of other communications that probably has to take place, but, uh, it's one of the questions I had, what's a long-term goal? And how would that affect maybe getting a community service officer program underway?
Well, the, the, the study, um, the way that I interpret the study is that our numbers in our patrol division and are, are not to be reduced, and these numbers that we have would go to that patrol division. Um, when you look at, when you look at CSOs and the CSO program, one of the things that you have to watch out for is these, these applicants that are gonna be applying are gonna be applying all over the state of Minnesota for a job. When we start up a CSO program, I would prefer to start with somebody that's maybe in their first year of college, so we would get some, some, you know, some time to train them, to bring them into the Forest Lake program. And then, when they graduate college, these, they would then begin to look for their, you know, full-time professional police job, where these folks that are applying, they're eligible to be licensed, or they're already licensed by the state of Minnesota, so we would have, you know, we may be ordering uniforms with one of the CSOs, and if, if, then they've already been hired the next day by Minneapolis-St. Paul or, you know, given a name. So, running those two side by side, um, I think would be, um, difficult from a, from a, a standpoint of, of workload, but also, I don't think you'd want that same candidate pool to hit both positions. And with the CSO program, there's a lot of legwork that we have to do. Um, we're, we're talking, you know, lots of meetings and lots of plannings and lots of policies to get put into play before we even, you know, open that application pool up. What we're looking here for is, you know, we're, we're gonna be down another two officers going through this next summer as we were last year, and getting that process started, and, and, you know, they, they won't hit the street on their own through FDO until the fall, so...
Sure, thank you.
You bet.
Yeah, that's why we really need to get going on this thing. It's been lagging behind.
Now, the question I had, do you have any, the la... The last hiring wasn't that far away. Are there any potential candidates left over from that?
That's a great question. We did, we did explore that, and, uh, with City Administrator Undom, it, where we are in that list is, we, we, we want, we want to start a new process.
Thank you.
All right. Any, any other comments, questions, or look for a motion?
Motion that we approve the police recruitment as recommended by staff.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Um, one comment, um, I wasn't in favor of this last week, or last meeting, because I did have some questions with the CPS, the Center for Public Safety.
Right.
Um, I've got most of those answered. Um, I definitely support going ahead with the recruitment, and that, I do want to convene a stakeholders meeting to go over some of those, uh, questions as well, but, um, that definitely isn't going to prohibit us from proceeding here, so...
Look forward to it.
Any, any other questions?
Just a point of clarity on the motion. Are you recommending two authorized or, just I want to make sure I'm clear when I...
Authorized two, the recruitment of two as recommended by staff.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstained. All right. And Dan, do you want to take us on seven D, the recruitment firm?
Yep, uh, may members of the council, uh, during the last, uh, council meeting, uh, council directed, uh, staff to reach out to the recruitment firms that had submitted, um, bids for the city administrator recruitment process, to the city to see if those bids were still valid, um, if anything had changed since the time that they were originally submitted up until the last meeting. Um, I did reach out to the three firms that had submitted, um, and found out that, uh, two of the firms' bids were still valid. One at the time actually had withdrawn their bid, they no longer were interested in providing services. However, they did state that if they were to start the process in November, they would be interested in re, um, applying or resubmitting a bid, uh, for admin, for admin recruitment services. Um, with that being, uh, the case, I reached out to an additional group, the Mercer Group, who was not able to send in a, a bid the first go-around because they only do one recruitment at a time. Uh, when I talked, when I spoke with them last week, they had just finished up a recruitment in another city, so they were available, um, so the timing was good for him, so he was able to submit, so we have the Mercer Group as a new, um, recruitment firm, uh, as part of this, uh, package that's put together here for your, for your consideration. Um, most of the firms', uh, processes are fairly similar, they're pretty well laid out in their proposals, um, and they all will handle, basically, they're all turnkey, uh, they'll, they'll handle the, basically, the recruitment or the creation of the job materials, debt post materials, a post position, they'll, um, reach out to their pool of, uh, other professionals to find out, to help, uh, build a candidate pool, they'll screen the candidates, they'll bring back recommendations to council. So again, all those things that we discussed as an internal process are now being handled by the recruitment firm here. Um, the one difference is that the Mercer Group actually submitted two bids. One was for full search, which was sixteen thousand, and they also, um, offered a modified search, which was just kind of, I believe, drops out some of the, um, uh, there's some specific items they drop out, such as, I think, some of the interview phases, they relay that back to, um, the council, but they handle everything else. Um, they just, so for the modified, they don't do background investigation, the interview, and they don't participate in the negotiation, so there's a little bit of cost savings if you wanted to go kind of with their modified, um, search. Um, but with that, all three firms are highly reputable firms, they all have a full list of references that are included in their proposals, and they've all been used, um, extensively throughout the state of Minnesota, and in fact, um, the Hugh Life was actually the firm that was used the last time the city went through the administr... Uh, through the administrative search process. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, um, which may have regarding the proposals in front of you.
Any questions for Dan? Um, the timetable for the Mercer Group versus the others is comparable?
Yeah, they're all very similar, they all have, uh, the Mercer Group has them, basically, they all have the process, if it starts now, um, you're looking at probably doing the selected and offering at about the end of July with a start date and about, about the beginning of September. Now, again, those dates can shift depending upon if we, you know, if, you know, there's a delay, we can't get a meeting scheduled, so those things are fluid. However, that's about the, you know, all of them are running about the same timeframe, about starting now and then ending the process in July with a anticipated start date about beginning of September.
Any thoughts on which group?
I was just gonna comment that the Mercer Group and the, uh, Springstead Waters Group are pretty comparable as far as dollars are concerned. Seems like, uh, the...
Mercer's quite a bit cheaper.
What's that?
The Hugh Life and, and...
Well, if you add, if you add, if you add it all up, you know, you got, you'd have twenty thousand, uh, there, the other one's twenty-one. Sixteen plus four.
The other's twenty plus thirty-five, so that's twenty-four.
Yeah, so, I mean, they're, they're pretty comparable. Hugh Life's a little more expensive, plus they got six hundred and fifty dollars per candidate for background checks, that seems a little high to me, but that's just my opinion.
I had a question, uh, Springstead Waters, um, reference testing, what type of testing does that include?
I'd have to go back and look at the actual item on their bid. Um, typically, there's probably, uh, some type of cognitive function testing, they go through some type of, a lot of times they'll have, you know, the candidate go through a potential scenario, you know, kind of say, what would you do in this kind of situation? To kind of show how they would react, to make sure that they're in line. I mean, each recruitment has a little bit different testing protocol that they utilize. Uh, I can see if I can't find it here in their bid for the specifics on it.
The other difference I see between the two is the guarantee. The other difference I see between the two is the guarantee. One is twelve months and the other one's twenty-four months.
Which might be huge.
Could be a huge difference.
The guarantee period didn't turn out to be the, I mean, it is twelve, an additional twelve months and that there is value in that. I had an opportunity to do a reference check on the Mercer Group with a colleague that has used them in the past and came back with fantastic feedback, especially for Mr. Miller, who would be the local representative. So that was helpful for me. I also saw Corinne Land from Lavender Miller as a reference. And we have a relationship obviously with Lavender Miller and Corinne Land is well respected. And so I, I think we have a, because they only do one at a time, we have a unique window of opportunity to use them. They have my preference currently unless, you know, there's another, I, I think we have three very good options in front of us. I'm tending to lean more towards the Mercer, just familiarity with our, our local market, good local references and a price point that's right in line with everybody else.
I, I would be willing to support the Mercer Group as well.
On the Mercer Group and then the two proposals, the low-end one, it sounds like we would have to do our own background checks. Is that correct? If you took the low-end one. And I guess my question is, oh, the Captain Weiss has left already. We background check obviously with the officer applicants. Why couldn't we background check our own?
I have the same concern, question.
I, I think the data privacy part of that might become a play as well.
Well, at the point typically when you background, you're backgrounding finalists, so they would be public at that point. And when we looked at it doing from the internal perspective, we actually, I did reach out to Chief Peterson and asked, you know, would your backgrounder be open to doing an admin recruitment? They did reach out and say, yeah, they would be able to basically put them through the same process.
And do you have a, like a fee number on that if we're talking six hundred here?
I would say it's in the ballpark. I don't know how that exact number in front of me, but I think it's probably in that ballpark, six hundred without.
But it seems we've been very successful with them bringing on officers and background checks.
Which one?
The people that the officers use to background check.
Well, I was, I just want to ask you a question because you were saying they didn't include the background check?
Well, there's two, Sam, I believe there's two proposals there. One is with the full package where it will do the interviews, the background check.
Right.
The second one, if I understood Dan correctly, is interviews would kind of fall on us, some of the interviews and the background checking.
Yeah, and, and the one caveat with that too, if you go with the modified search, that the back, the guarantee of placement does not apply to that modified search, so. You're, you're taking out a little bit.
So you're, so you're losing the guarantee.
Right, and you're also, I mean.
I don't think it'd save that much money either.
I'm just, just.
I think it would slow the process down.
Yeah.
As well, so.
I'm leaning towards Springstead Waters. Again, you get a whole nother year out of them. Sometimes it'll take a year to get, to get an employee acclimated as far as the guarantee goes. The numbers again are about the same. I think now you're looking at a smaller company do a larger company. I think you might have more resources with that larger company.
I think I'd still lean towards more of the local connection with the Mercer Group. I think ideally, the candidate we find should be, you know, hopefully within thirty miles, fifty miles of here to begin with, so.
Well, if I understood it correctly, the Mercer Group, it would be their only project for that particular time?
That is correct. They only, James Mill only does one recruitment at a time, so he only, he focused exclusively on this recruitment until it's completed and then he goes on to another project. So we did catch him, like, I think he wrapped up his, his other project, I think, last week. So it was like he had just finished it and he said, you caught me right at the exact right time for bid submission.
One thing I had, I did clarify, it was helpful for me, is I didn't want just a one-person shop. He does have a larger network within his organization that this is also what they do. He just personally in this, in the Minnesota market, he, that's what he focuses on and he does one at a time. But he does have other resources in his office, which give me a little more comfort of, it's beyond just one person.
I also would opt for the Mercer Group. The other one being a larger organization, we're not doing a national search, so I don't know that we need that.
I wasn't concerned with the national search, just more resources, more, more people involved in the process.
But their resources will be spread thinner because they're doing lots of other recruiting.
Many hands make later work.
All right. Any further discussion or I'll look for a motion on this?
I'd make a motion that we approve recruitment, the full proposal from the Mercer Group.
All right. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No.
Yeah, I understand. So, surely let's do a roll call just to clarify that again.
Councilmember Bane, or Bacchus?
No.
Councilmember Bane?
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick?
No.
Councilmember Eigner?
Aye.
And Mayor Winnick?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
All right, that takes us to Comp Plan Extension Donovan.
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of council, what you have before you is a resolution to extend our comp plan submission date till March twenty-ninth of twenty nineteen. This is a, the comp plan update is a process that first began with, in October of twenty sixteen with a workshop to discuss, you know, the work scope.
Sorry to interrupt you, Donovan. Didn't we approve this extension? I thought we approved it at.
No, I was simply saying this is, this was going to come forward.
Oh, okay. That was at the workshop, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead.
Sure. And looking through the, you know, looking through the full schedule, seems to me the, the reason that we're requesting the deadline is that we took longer time to get more public feedback as well as working more with the future land use plan. In strict time, we're about a month and a half beyond, behind our February twenty seventeen schedule. And the big, the big hangup is that there's a six-month period in which, once this, what's the, once the city council is done and adopted the, and authorized the plan for, for review, there is this, a six-month period in which the affected jurisdictions, that's neighboring communities, the Washington District, Mendocino, School District, they can, they can comment on the plan. That could take six months. Oftentimes it doesn't. So in this case, it's simply insurance policy so that in case the city council doesn't adopt the, the draft plan formally in Ju, in June, when I expect to present it to council, that we know we will get that six-month period in, you know, into twenty nineteen, but still comply with the rules. And most of the time, that six-month period does take less time because it's a reciprocal thing involving, you know, we're, we're also, the city of Forest Lake is also reviewing affecting, you know, other jurisdictions. And so there's kind of a motivation for to do the review quick, you know, expeditiously and allow the, you know, to kind of close the time for the, each other. So I'd be happy to take any questions from council this time.
So a couple of questions for you. First, is there anything we can do to close that gap to expedite this between now and then?
Oh, certainly, yeah. I, I, first of all, we send letters out requesting that. And then I'll follow up with, you know, phone calls and emails to encourage that. And of course, on our side, to make sure that we're, we're, you know, we do a quick review.
And is, is it beneficial to get a preliminary to our neighboring jurisdictions for their reviews before the final and just, you know, like a red line changes on that last one or isn't that going to speed the process up at all either?
I don't, it, I mean, it may help in an informal way, but, you know, unless there is things proposed that are, they would see as highly detrimental, I don't think, there's a, there's a lot, you know, there's a lot that really is just confined within jurisdictions. There's not a lot of overlap.
Ed?
And the question I have, and I believe it's for Ryan. A couple of meetings ago, I, I know you were kind of insistent that we move ahead on this plan. What, if any, on your projects will this impact?
Just kind of a quick summary, I guess, you know, the plan was pretty close to being done and tell there was some, I guess, disagreement with the future land use plan that we've had in discussion and brought forth with the task force committee meetings and public meetings and kind of in limbo. You know, in February, you know, March twelfth, the city council meeting, I started raising some concern. Hey, we got to figure out the land use map before we can figure out all the other chapters. You know, March nineteenth, I got more vocal at the workshop. Thus then there was a meeting held March twenty-ninth with a group of people that finalized the land use map. But a lot of the zoning significantly changed there, so all the chapters had to go back and start over with all the tables and the charts and the configurations and all the, all that stuff. So that's, that's where really we're behind and why. Now, once we get all that taken care of and submitted, certainly if all the agencies do review within that six-month period, we'll still submit final document by December of two thousand eighteen and be in compliance with that. But in the event that even one agency hasn't responded, takes longer time past that timeframe, now that gives us that cushion to stay within that timeframe. So, you know, the most important thing to start out with was the land use map because everything's geared off of that. And now that we have that finalized, as long as once we bring it to the public hearing in that draft and we don't see significant changes again, we're ready to submit to the agencies around us in one comprehensive review. So they're all reviewing the same document and not individual documents and then redoing it all again.
So this delay will not delay any of your projects?
No.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Now we'll look for a motion.
I'd make a motion that would go ahead with the comp plan, the extension plan that Donovan Hart has presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ryan?
Mayor, city council, in your packet, you have the request for the bid award for the two thousand eighteen Reclamation and Double Chip Seal project. On April nineteenth, we had the bid, held the veto, and being two bids received, which is typical for this type of work. Typically, really three contractors bid on this. The third contractor I did talk with, Wyatt, and he couldn't find anybody to do the full depth reclamation in the time period. Wanted the project, but the low bid is significantly lower than the project budget, so very good news there. So with the cost savings there, we'll still be able to do a quote project for crack filling if the council desire. But tonight, we look for the city council to award the, the low bid to Alad Blacktop Company in the amount of one hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. One hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars, which would include base bid and alternate one for the two thousand eighteen Reclamation and Double Chip Seal project.
Hey, Ryan, what was the initial estimate on this?
We started with a budget of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, but then we had to take ten thousand out to do the traffic counts because every four years the city is required to do traffic counts on their state aid roads. So which brought it down to two fifteen. So obviously we were much below than that. Still want to save some cushion in case we run into some soft subgrade spots while we're in the work, but then move forward and get quotes on crack filling jobs to bring back for a future city council approval.
All right.
This is typically the fund that funds either this type of project or crack filling or seal coating, so.
All right, sounds good. Well, it's very good news to see it that much lower than estimates anyway. And hopefully we will be able to get a couple more miles of road done afterwards, try and get ahead of that part of it, so. Any further questions for Ryan? Sammy didn't have one, okay. I'll look for a motion then.
Well, I'd make a motion that we accept a bid that was supplied by Alad Blacktop Company in the amount of one hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And on to Winix Supply invoices.
I'd make a motion to pay the Winix Supply invoices.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And one abstained. Those staff updates. Oh, there you are. Hey, Dave.
Here.
I move around, yeah. Just two quick updates. The Compost site is open today. It was the first day. It's back to normal schedule, four days a week here. Mondays, Wednesdays, Saturdays, Sundays, the schedules posted on the board at the Compost site and on the website. We'll continue that, that usually goes till June first, but with the late start, we might extend that farther into June. We'll just kind of see how the traffic is coming in there closer to the end of May and see if we want to keep it open almost four days a week. Second thing, contract street sweeping starts next Monday. It was going to start this week, but after driving around even on Sunday around town, there was still a lot of the roads on the south side were still covered in snow, so I wanted to make sure that when they came, they got everything. So it will start next Monday. I talked to Washington County this, today as well. They're going to be sweeping Broadway next week. So public work staff will be sweeping sidewalks and trails onto Broadway this week, so they can grab that when they come through. So that'll be all cleaned up this week.
All right. Any questions for Dave? Is there a limit at the Compost site to, you know, diameter or anything for?
There, there, there was a limit to begin with, but since we have a contracted, our contractor coming to chip, they'd rather see the bigger, bigger sized trees to chip. It makes it more worth their while to come. So as long as, basically, we just restrict stumps with dirt in it or any kind of, you know, stumps. But we'll take pretty much any diameter tree as long as they can get it off their trailer. No contractors, no contractors still, but residents, if they, you know, fell out with a full-sized tree, we'll take the whole tree down if they don't want it, so.
I thought they weren't chipping it.
What's that?
I thought we weren't chipping them.
Or, or contractors chipping, so. Well, we'll go backwards. Ryan?
Mayor, city council, other than going on every project in detail, there's a lot of significant development on the horizon here, whether it's site developments, including apartment buildings, potentially at four construction in the two thousand eighteen season. Headwaters eleventh, Chestnut Creek Phase Two, Third Lake Estates. That's out by Aqua Restaurant, so different location in town, which is great. And then the plot, land exchange, which will include approximately thirty detached townhomes and apartment complexes within there. So a lot of great projects coming forward. May fifth will be our bid opening for the two thousand eighteen street project. And we've got nine prime plan holders already, a bunch of good names on that list, so we should get good bids on that project. May first, I'll be attending one of the three dates the county's offering for, Washington County for the two thousand nineteen through twenty-three CIP engagement workshop. This is something new the county started last year, basically kind of a kickstart to the CIP planning, which they typically start around our, our budget season as well. But to provide input to be incorporated in that early in, in the process. So great opportunity there to voice the voices of Forest Lake within Northern Washington County. Obviously, you'll be seeing a lot of traffic switching and movements on I thirty-five between ninety-seven and Highway eights this week as we're in progress of making that swish over and getting the road control stuff set in. See some trucks obviously moving in and out of the, the way station area today, so things are starting to roll now. And we'll be moving into construction here pretty shortly. Believe the concrete batch plants will be fully operated mid to late May for a recolor, so that road closure will be coming soon as well, so. That's all I got unless you guys have any questions.
Any questions for Ryan? I know you have been busy. I know we've been working together, talking about quite a few different things, so.
Did get a little shaver today.
You did, okay, good. Appreciate all your efforts. Richard?
Thank you. I don't know updates at this time.
All right, and Dan?
We're getting to the point now where we're starting to finalize the interviews for the intermediate county clerk and fire technician position. So we should have two candidates to bring forward at the next council meeting for consideration and approval. Lake Association meetings are coming up. You have the Forest Lake Lake Association this April, or the twenty-sixth of April at, I believe it's at Stella's.
Seven P M.
Is that it?
Stella's at seven.
Stella's. And then Clear Lake Association meeting will be here on May sixteenth. So we're in, annual meetings for lake associations are coming up. we're in, annual meetings for lake associations are coming up. And then Most FL has their pancake breakfast this coming Sunday, April twenty-ninth. And then, finally, the Pioneer Press is looking at doing an article on some of the cities that submitted a bid for the Amazon project. So I'm working with a reporter there to kind of give them some additional information. So, potentially, we should have some additional press on the Amazon bid that was submitted, when they were looking for headquarters too nationwide. So, I'll be working with a reporter to kind of get that finalized. And on that, I have no other updates.
Thanks, Dan. Bailey?
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right. Chief?
Earlier today, we were paged out for a fire alarm in an apartment building. When fire crews arrived, they found a sprinkler system had activated in one of the apartment buildings. It was in one of the rooms where the residents were not home. They did have active fire on the second floor of a four-story apartment building, and the sprinkler systems worked great, put the fire out. And then, we assisted with ventilation and reduce, or cleaning up water. That's all I have, unless you have something for me.
No, appreciate it. And Donovan?
No update. I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. We'll move on to council updates. Sam?
I attended the school board meeting last Thursday evening, and the bulk of the conversation was about the referendum that's, we will be coming up again this fall. They've had to cut a couple million dollars out of their budget again, since I've been there about six or eight million dollars have gone out of their budget. And the big thing there was to decide on the amount that they were gonna ask for from the voters, and it would be about eight hundred and twenty-five dollars per student for over an eight-year period. So, that was, and that's all I have for right now.
All right, thank you.
No update.
All right. I did not have many, I had a human rights commission meeting, which unfortunately I did miss due to a prior family engagement. But I just want to wish, or pass my best wishes on to our council member, Husnick. He was hobbling around, had some crutches tonight.
I'll be fine. If I, if I had an extra leg, I'd kick myself with it.
All right. Lee?
I attended the Parks, Trails, Lakes Committee meeting, along with, as well as the workshop. There's a bit of planning for Belt Park, as far as warming house expansions, some potential layout. The High School Political Action Club was involved with some of those discussions, which is really good to see.
They did a great job of that.
Definitely. So there's still a lot in the works. Good group of people there. They're still interested in looking at Lakeside as a potential inclusive playground. They're gonna reevaluate on some of those things, and they're open to any feedback we could bring to them.
All right, great. Mar?
I attended a cable commission meeting, and Paul provided an update on a new partnership opportunity with Forest Lake Area Schools on help, providing assistance on some video and journalism classes, which is part of, you know, the mission of the cable commission, on providing education opportunities and using some of the equipment dollars that are set aside as PEG grants. And so it's fun to see that those dollars be set aside and kind of invested back in that partnership with the schools. Nothing is finalized, but he was kind of looking for guidance from the cable commission and is partnering with the school district to kind of come up with a match that would work for both. So, more to come on that. Kudos to Forest Lake Fire for having a fun event for prom students. Was kind of a fun, I think, very impromptu thing that was enjoyed, and it was fun to see some fun press come out of that. So kudos to you for being creative and being responsive to the community. And that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Mar.
I'm just wondering on the cable commission, if we look at somehow with, you know, some of those students, or whoever, that they may want to take more of an active role, like with our city website and our social media. I, I think there's some, there's some good potential there to, you know, reach out to the younger generation as well, but also to get that service taken care of in a kind of a younger and fresher, funner way than what we're trying to do right now, kind of.
I think-
I think we're kind of reactive now, instead of proactive on it.
A broader definition of media. I think, let's see where the, so I appreciate that Paul has a small staff, and let's see where he's able to kind of get this off the ground, but then there's certainly some opportunity to evolve. Right now, there's an immediate need for equipment and the ability to provide content for classes. I think that's a good match, and let's get that off the ground, and then certainly can, you know, you could expand that to a broader use of the media, and that certainly would be in line with the cable commission's mission, so. It's fun to see them expand beyond kind of just L A TV programming, and really provide back to and invest those franchise dollars back into the community. So, it's a good opportunity.
All right, thank you. I do have an appointment to the Parks, Lakes and Trails Commission. Actually, I had two, but we have a snaffle on some of the paperwork. So, I do have one. Tim Gary, I'm gonna appoint to that. And Dan, do we need a motion of approval on that one?
Yes.
Okay.
For any of you who would, yeah. So I'll look for-
I'll make a motion that we appoint Tim Gary, is it?
Tim Gary.
To the Park and Trails, the Park and Trails?
Parks, Lakes and Trails Commission.
Park and Trails.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And that brings us to the end of the meeting. We'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And we have a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You may adjourn.